Left call this meeting for order six oh two. This is a regular meeting in town from Washington according to requirements of huge factors regarding open public meetings. Notice this meeting is equally advertised to the very opposed to South Jersey time and close coast on the board board in Minnesota. Fire exits have looked into here, but last this meeting is being videoed here. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on channel nine every week, Sunday at nine PM, Wednesday at seven PM, Friday at ten PM, and Saturday at ten PM, and continue until the next week. This meeting is being watched through on YouTube. It can be viewed if you link listed on the agenda. Please rise for the party leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Here.
President.
Mayor Dan Culpia.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Present.
Okay, we're gonna start off with presentations. We have a musical performance by Olivia Broadbelt, Matthew Robinson, Noah Elliott, Kylie McGelroy, and Lila Gengar of Washington Township.
Thank you. One thing to do is these are five outstanding graduating seniors from the Washington Township class of 2025, and I wanted to introduce them. Right here is Olivia Broadbelt.
Yes.
Matthew Robinson. We have Kylie McGelroy. We have Lila Gengar. And substituting for Noah Elliott is Josh Bell. You guys are great. Thank you so much.
Taking time out of your busy schedule. We know you're getting ready for graduation in two months, and that's why we wanted them to come out tonight and not a later date because they're gonna be busy practicing graduation.
Yeah, you guys have some events coming up?
Are you guys part of the band that plays at the veteran ceremonies? Can somebody come and see what you guys have? You're waiting down the zone? You have first class?
So we have our performance May 6th. It's at night at the RBPAC at the Washington Township High School. We are separate from the band. The band is the one that you see at those events. It's just a difference in instrument type and sound. We have a couple performances that we do separately as just a small group that we don't really publicize, but it's just something fun that we do because we've been friends for so long and we've been playing for so long.
How long have you been there?
Ten, nine, ten years.
Wow.
Yeah.
And they perform at like senior centers, assistant elevations, or do that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm so impressed that seniors come up.
Yeah, giving back to the community is very, very important.
Absolutely.
And it makes a difference to the people that have seen us. So thank you very, very much.
Of course.
If you have any events you want us to share on our social media blogs now, we'll put a full size where you can put them out.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
I just thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate you. Now, Mayor, something else to recognize here? Kylie? No.
Josh could hold it.
Josh's name? This is Noah.
Yeah.
If Josh's name, we'll get one.
We'll pass it along.
Matthew? Last one, please. Please play with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One there is Jackie over here. Here's the short guy.
He's stuck in the chat so much.
(Laughter)
Moving on to our next presentation, I'd like to call Sheila Mickelson and the members of the library staff to come up to celebrate National Library Week.
Come on, don't be afraid.
Oh, it's not a dirty one.
So to celebrate National Library Week, the mayor and council have a proclamation celebrating National Library Week and honoring the vital contributions of the Margaret E. Hagan Free Public Library. Whereas the Margaret E. Hagan Free Public Library provides opportunity for Washington Township residents to engage in lifelong learning seven days a week, and whereas the library has served as a trusted institution for township residents since 1996, whereas the library serves as a cornerstone of democracy championing the fundamental principles of free expression and the exchange of ideas for all. And whereas the library has a collection of over 90,000 books, movies, magazines, audiobooks, music compact discs, American Girl dolls, and museum passes for residents to borrow. And whereas the library provides hundreds of programs each year for residents of all ages, and whereas the library plays a critical role within the community by furnishing vital resources such as internet and technological access, fostering literacy skills, and providing invaluable support for job seekers, educators, small businesses, and entrepreneurs alike. And whereas librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week, now there, excuse me, now there, where I, Mayor Delpia, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 12th. I urge all residents to take advantage of this occasion by visiting the Margaret E. Hagan Free Public Library and exploring the abundance of resource it offers. Proclaim this ninth day of April, 2025. Sheila?
I always take great pride in announcing your events, but since you're here, do you want to highlight some of the things for April?
I mostly want to highlight the fact that we have a new Little Free Library, which is right in front of this building. So Little Free Libraries are throughout the country to provide materials to people who just want to leave a book and take a book. We also have bookmarks in the Little Free Libraries. So there's one at Washington Lake Park here at the municipal building, and we're getting a TARDIS. If you are a Doctor Who fan, we have a Little Free Library that looks like a TARDIS, and it's gonna be at the police station, and it says "Police Box" on it. So we're hopefully in May or June, we'll be putting that there.
And thank you to your staff and the members of the board that are here.
All right, you don't have to stay there. You run down the trash.
You're welcome.
The trash cans are free. Trust me, you have two of them.
I call out now with first, excuse me, first.
Moving on with our presentations, I'd like to call Director Altamira, and is Brian here too? Okay. To come up and give us an update on the trash. Upon completion of his presentation, hopefully he will have answered everybody's questions. But if you have a question, please raise your hand to be recognized, and we'll have our deputy clerk come around with the microphone so everybody can hear it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Altamiro. I'm director of Public Works. As many of you already heard, there are some changes coming to our trash recycling and yard debris collection coming this summer. Since the announcement, we have gotten lots of feedback, and I would like to take a moment to clear some things up. This spring, you'll be receiving three brand-new 95-gallon wheeled carts delivered right to your home. A black cart for trash, a blue cart for recycling, and a green cart for yard waste. There's no need to schedule an appointment or be home when they arrive. These carts will replace your current bins, and they will be the only receptacle that can be used once the new collection goes into effect on June 30th, 2025. Why the change? Unfortunately, rear-loading trash collection has gotten too expensive for companies to continue doing. Washington Township was faced with a very difficult situation. If we attempted to stay with rear-load collection, we were looking at our cost almost doubling, and that was only if we can get a company to bid on that service. We had to hire a consultant to help us find our options, and we have fiscally responsible solution. This is why we had to agree to change over to automated collection. Eighteen of 24 towns in Gloucester County have already gone to automated collection. Collection and disposal of trash, recycling, and yard debris is extremely costly and not something that the township takes lightly. Our cost for collection is just over $495,000, and on top of that, the cost to dispose or recycle all of that is another $200,000. So that means the township is paying just under $700,000 per month for trash recycling and yard debris. This is a large part of our budget, yet only 2.7% of your property taxes goes towards this collection. It's in an effort to prevent substantially raising taxes, township how to make these changes. We've also heard from communities that have less area in front of their homes for cart placement and access. Our company, Suburban, is aware of these areas, and they're preparing to be able to collect as scheduled. We're really excited about these improvements and believe they'll make a positive difference to everyone in Washington Township. Obviously, we have our website. All this information will be posted, and our website will be the only place to find up-to-date, accurate information relevant to the upcoming changes. I do have frequently asked questions, but I'll save them after, not to prolong this. But I wanted to introduce Jack Lutz to just give a little demonstration of the carts everybody's gonna be receiving. Thank you.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, I thank you for allowing me to come speak My name's Jack Lutz. Jack Lutz, I am the Senior Strategic Business Development Director for IPL Incorporated. We are a 97-year-old company. We are a plastic manufacturer of many, many products. One division, and it's the division I run, is the environmental side. Born and raised in the garbage business, unfortunately, I'm getting a little older now, so I've been around for a long, long time. Frank touched base on some very important facts, your landfill bill. Landfill bills are a lot of money. By going to a containerized system, you keep the trash dry. Comes out of the house, goes into the container, the lid is attached to the container. You have to open it to put the garbage in. Ninety-nine out of 100 people will close the lid. There is a barrier built into this lid. You'll see this little, closer, sorry. There's a barrier at the top of the lid and at the top of the container that interlocks, keeps the moisture out, keeps any odors in. So the savings on your landfill bill is 18 to 20%. So depending on your tonnage, you're shaving a lot of money off your bill, which equates to saving on your tax cost. These containers are guaranteed. They come with a manufacturer's warranty of 10 years. I don't know if I touched on that before. Very easy to use, tilt and roll. 25 pounds of physical force to tilt and roll this container at its maximum capacity of 335 pounds. 95 gallons is equal to three and a quarter of the normal 28 to 32-gallon trash cans. It has the biggest footprint in the industry. It's completely watertight on the inside, and it's designed to take a lot of weight and a lot of beating. The automated system, I know there's some concerns in your community. It's the same concerns that every community I go to. It won't fit down our streets. Those automated trucks are designed no wider than a rear loader. So the arm comes out, grabs the container, brings it back. Depending on the manufacturer, that arm can be eight feet long, it could be 14 feet long. So it all depends on the truck that's been purchased to collect this. But cul-de-sacs aren't a problem. Park cars on the street with a great education program, all you need to do is give it six inches on each side, the arm will come up and grab the container, dump it, and put it right back where they picked it up. The footprint on this container is another issue that always pops up, is it's too big for my garage, it won't fit. It's the same diameter as the average 30-gallon Rubbermaid brute that you would buy at Home Depot or Walmart or Lowe's. So the wheels do stick out a little bit in the back, and that's for the stability of the container. Empty this container under the ANSI rules and regulations is certified to 55 miles an hour of wind rating, all four sides, empty. That's before you put anything in it. No one in this room, no one in your town, is putting 335 pounds a week of garbage into this container or recyclables. Yard waste, they throw a lot of dirt and bricks and stuff, then there's a problem. But the truck won't pick it up once it gets to a certain weight limit because there's a limiter on that arm. So it's a learning curve to get used to the system. There was a lady in the audience before, I'm not too sure if she's still here. She lives in another community. We containerized that community two years ago. I heard her talking to her friends, saying it's the best thing that ever happened to her town. And her town has a two-cart system. You're going to the third cart for the yard waste. Most people now are doing that. And get ready, not too long down the road, you'll be adding the fourth one for food waste. And that's happening throughout the state. Our governor is pushing it. So it comes with 10-inch wheels, three-quarter inch solid steel axle. There's crumple zones to protect it when the arm picks it up. So it's just a change to get used to, but most people like it once they get used to it. It's very simple. We have what product goes into it hot-stamped on the lid. Your black ones will say "trash." Your green ones will say "yard waste," and the blue one says "recycle." So it's reinforced every day. There's arrow that is raised lettering in the back of the corner of the cart. It tells you the face of the arrow towards the street. Wheels the curb, front to the street. Very easy. But if someone makes a mistake, puts it out sideways, or with the handles out, the truck will still be able to dump it without the man getting out of the truck. The labor issue is very expensive. People don't want to grow up to work on the back of a rear loader anymore. It's kind of hard to believe, but that's the fact. This is a one-man operation. The operator's inside the truck. He runs a joystick. He doesn't have to physically get out of the truck and do anything. That's basically it. I wanted to keep it short and sweet. I know I went on too long the last time, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I have quite a bit, so I can either wait till the open period, or I can come up there and make a presentation, whatever you prefer. I can't hear you.
Would you rather respond again?
Okay.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Cheryl Branko. I live at 21 Greenacre Way. I've already addressed all the council people via email. Some of you were kind enough to write me back, and I want to take a different perspective from the trash situation. I have a very large family. We have large gatherings at my house, and I can tell you without a doubt that the amount of trash that we generate will not fit in those trash cans during any given holiday period, party, anything. This is a huge burden. This is a huge burden on me that I am being told that I would have to carry it to the municipal dump myself. Anyway, what I did was I went through some of the records in the town, and I figured the best way to attack this situation was through the records of who lives here. And I do have access to that. So what I did was I looked at this in two ways. I looked at how many houses were sold in the past 10 years in this township that have three bedrooms, four bedrooms, and five or more bedrooms. The total amount of houses that were sold in this township, again, in 10 years, were 5,300. Now, some of them could have been bought, lived, sold, whatever, again, so it could be a little bit less than that. But again, the number is 5,300. This is three bedrooms or more. We are not filling three- and four-bedroom houses with tiny families. Big families are coming to live here in our big houses that were approved years ago by the planning boards that were in effect then. So basically, what you're doing is you have a township that was built for large families, and now you're relegating us to one trash can, which I find crazy. So that's the trash part. The yard waste part, what I did was I looked at the yard sizes. Now, my house is on almost a half an acre, okay? The yard waste that we generate when we do our yard cleanups and everything, not the stuff that we rake to the yard, but just general debris, tree limbs that fall down, things like that, is significant. I have four trash cans at my curb right this second. I've got a picture for you. Okay? So anyway, I looked at all the houses that are on big lots. And again, half an acre is not that big. There are 2,592 houses in Washington Township that are on a lot of a quarter to a half an acre. There are, hold on, on a half an acre to one acre, there are 1,197 houses. That's a lot of yard waste. And I know that we have, you know, rules in this town that you have to keep your lawn yard clean. How are we going to get all of that in one container? I just find this to be so ludicrous. It is not something that is supported by a community with homes and lot sizes like this. I went around on trash night last week, and I took pictures of some of the larger trash piles that were out in the neighborhoods that are near where I live. And I can give them to you. But basically, what you're looking at is massive amounts of trash outside on trash night. This does not fit in three trash cans. I'm sorry. And this is just general people. This is somebody's Home Depot bag filled with lawn debris. How are we going to get that in one? I mean, seriously, come on. And how are they, if you don't have the pickup truck, how are you going to get it to the municipal dump? Here's another one. This one's a little blurry, but it's all yard waste. Here's another one, mostly yard waste. It's spring cleanup. Now, I had yard waste at my curb last week. I figured, it's spring, you don't have to call. Nope, they didn't pick it up. They picked up my neighbor's trash can 20 feet away, but did they get mine? No, it's ridiculous. My Christmas tree sat at the curb for three weeks because it didn't dawn on me that I have to call for a stupid Christmas tree. Come on, that's just nuts. They're not coming out for trees? Here's another one. How's that going to fit in three trash cans? It's not. So again, I find this policy not only to be not thinking about who lives in this town, but also it's discriminatory. Those of us with big families, what the heck are we going to do? I have 20 people come into my house next week for dinner. I have over 30 at Christmas. You should see the street in front of my house for Christmas with Amazon boxes and everything. There's somebody else's Amazon box. This is not fitting in trash cans. Anyway, I've got 23 of them, including my own house for tonight, and I will submit these. I'm sure you want to see them, right? So do you have people that are, want, think this is wonderful? Absolutely. But do they really have the families the size that I do? Do they have the families that are filling up four-bedroom houses like I do? It's just, I just, you know, the other thing that bothers me about this is you didn't ask for public input on this. You announced it on Facebook, like, oh my God, look at what we did, but nobody had a chance to come out and put in any kind of input about it. I've seen it on the township pages, people are upset about it, and a lot of people think it's great, too, just like that lady you had here. But who's living in the houses that think it's great? Seriously. You have anyone, two people living in there, or do you have a bunch of people coming out? So the other issue is, you know, I heard about county dumping fees. Well, if we have to take it to the township, aren't we still paying county dumping fees for that? We are, right? Also, what happens is you put the business dumpsters, which, you know, there's plenty of them around town, you put them at risk now because they're going to be paying more to dump because the residents are coming there at night, sneaking in, and dumping their trash. And I can tell you for a fact, they are already doing that. You know, they don't want the trash to stay around. Anyway, I just, again, I find this to be very discriminatory towards those of us that have big families, and I just, I don't know why that was passed without any input. So there's my input. Questions? No?
Well, I think we kind of addressed the director's comments. You talked about the new land and the trash collection. So it's clear that our contract is by, instead of hiring a consultant, it's a big problem with the new land and trash cans.
Rear-loading trash cans are going away. The people who are running the companies are having problems getting people to man the trucks and the injuries. We're forced into a position where the cost for trash hauling and pickup could have increased anywhere between 75 and 150%. The due diligence of the administration to save taxpayers' money, we were able to keep it at around 34% of an increase. We didn't take this decision lightly.
You have cut services by doing this.
No, we've changed services. We have not cut services.
I'm sorry, what was that word?
We've changed services. We haven't cut services.
No, no, no. You're cutting services. Look at those pictures that I just gave you.
We've created this agreement.
That is one section of Washington Township on one trash night. Those trash cans are overflowing, they're filled, the debris from the lawn cleanups and the yard cleanups, there's multiple trash cans. How are we supposed to get that out? Seriously.
I understand.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else have any other comments they'd like to make? All right.
Do you want to see if Frank wants to answer anything?
Frank, you want to have?
Frank, can you explain about where the multiple cans? Yeah.
Yes, as far as the extra cans, you will be, you will have the option to get a second cart of each, one trash, one recycling, and one yard waste. They will be, there will be a one-time upfront $100 fee for 10 years, and that's per can, and that payment is non-refundable. They will be available like three months after the automation starts, and then it'll be about up to four weeks for delivery. Some people will have the option to opt out of yard waste because some people get their grass cut, some people have HOAs, they may not want to choose, they may opt out. We are working on getting that link live hopefully by next week, where residents can actually go online to our Public Works and opt out of a yard waste can. But you will have the option to buy one extra can, lease one extra can of each. So, and as far as the Christmas trees, Public Works will be doing that next year for the month of January, weather permitting, if we're not plowing snow.
But again, we're sold that stuff these days. If you want, but people are expecting that a lot of the stuff.
Yeah.
They are more than two years.
Yeah. I, we say it all the time. We say it all the time, and it's only a select few. To do, to do bulk pickup and yard debris pickup on a weekly basis, it would cost us $115,000 a month. We are going down to once a month for yard debris pickup, and it's going to be dedicated on a Friday. So if your Monday trash is your Monday trash day, you'll be picked up the first Friday of the month. Tuesday would be the second Friday of the month. Wednesday and Friday pickups will be the third Friday, and Thursday would be the fourth Friday of the month, once a month.
Any other?
You realize this is what you're addressing, right?
It's the cost. It's the cost.
But again, for a large township, this is what you have to do. You want us to keep our yards clean, correct? You want us to keep them safe by keeping up falling branches and all kinds of stuff like that, but yet you are limiting us from doing it. You are limiting us from doing our job. That's what you do.
We cannot raise taxes to the point where...
There's nothing else available.
We have to make the most fiscally responsible decision.
We are township, to be honest. There's no way that most people can handle this. Where's the connection? We need a pickup truck, is that what we need now? Is there one?
All right, we're going to move, we're going to move on if there's any other questions.
I'll have more information posted on the website.
Barb, can you get, can you stand up, and she'll approach you with the mic.
Robert Davis in Sylbrook Drive in Sewell. She just mentioned that a lot of these houses have more than one container of yard waste or trash or recyclables. However, as Frank mentioned, these containers equal three and a quarter of the buckets that are used now. So if you have two currently containers, both of those can, the stuff that fits in those two containers will fit in one container of these new units that they have. And as Frank mentioned, you can also purchase a second container.
Lease, it's a 10-year lease.
Yes.
Well, we can do that after the meeting. I want to move on with the agenda. Thank you, Director Ultemaro. Moving on, we have the bill list. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for April 9th, 2025?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes. Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes for March 26, 2025?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance 2, 2025, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank for calendar year 2025. This ordinance is up for adoption after a public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public, to the public on ordinance 2, 25?
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody who wants to speak on ordinance 2, 25 regarding the establishment of the cap bank? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2, 2025?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes. Ordinance 3, ordinance adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the Washington Square redevelopment area in accordance with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law. This ordinance is up for adoption after a public hearing. Can I have a motion to open to the public on ordinance 3, 2025?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to speak on ordinance 3, 2025 regarding the amended redevelopment plan, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Victoria Benetti. I live in the Sewell area of Washington Township, and I have some comments about the redevelopment plan. To the extent that it appears that there are amendments that will now allow explicitly automobile dealerships and repair facilities in areas 1, 2, and 3 of the redevelopment zone, that is a bit of a concern because some of those practices or uses are prohibited in wellhead protection areas. And the wellhead protection area actually coincides to some considerable extent with this redevelopment area. There is a statement in the redevelopment plan that says that the plan is also intended to promote development that is environmentally sensitive. In particular, development is to include measures to ensure the protection of water resources, preventing additional health risks and underwater treatment costs that can result from development. To do this, plans within wellhead protection areas should conform to the township's wellhead protection standards. So I want to point out that there is a potential for conflict, and I would like to, some assurance that the protection of our water supply will supersede some of the allowances for uses in those redevelopment areas.
So what I can say to you is this, when you come up with a redevelopment plan, you set up priorities and you take control, or you're telling me not to be, not to be, or should be, or you should be. What I can say to you is this, that any kind of development that this is allowed, that is taken, that is, so while the redevelopment, right, which is part of the community, does allow township certain attitude, if the government is part of the redevelopment, whether you use, try to include areas where the township committees adjust values in redevelopment, that doesn't mean you can just start a new project and buy that. So, you know, I mean, it's hard to speak to the head of that, you know, but these individual projects that may come up, they don't have the banking intention of environmental laws affecting any of them.
Well, this particular wellhead protection ordinance is a local ordinance. That protection is not afforded by a state or a federal law. This is something that this community adopted about 20 years ago to protect our water supplies. So I'm just pointing this out. I know that often when we look at projects in redevelopment areas, there are certain allowances that are permitted by the planning board that go beyond our typical ordinance allowances or our land use ordinances. And so I just see the potential for conflict, and I would like to note that our environmental protections would supersede any redevelopment interests.
Councilman Brown, may I speak?
Yep.
So, Victor, we have our Tuesday meeting. We usually meet with prospective businesses, come to town, Joe Russo, Joe Harris, it's in there, and Che Patrangelo. Whenever we're discussing the area near Fryes Mill Road or over there, that is one of the first things Che ever brings up is the wellhead protection. So I can tell you from the time I've been involved, when it involves that area, that is one of the first things that come up. Now, being an ordinance, I can't say what a council will do in 10 years or 15 years, but I can tell you, I'll speak for that, but I can tell you in the experiences I've had, when that area's come up, the wellhead protection's been one of the first things that we talk about to make sure that that is not affected. So the zones that I believe redevelopment covers, as many zones where some of these uses would work and not affect the wellhead plan, I think that's the intention of the update, is to have them in places where it will not put our water at risk.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, and I'm glad to... Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that those sorts of discussions occur.
Absolutely.
This is not just on Fryes Mill Road, however. This is along the Black Horse Pike as well.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I will look forward to that sort of protection of our water supplies. And, um, to the extent that I see any discrepancies, I will surely let you know.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki.
Do I have any other comment on this ordinance? Can I get a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Fa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 3, 2025?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes. Moving on, was, excuse me, ordinance 4, 2025. Ordinance of the Township of Washington and the County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, canceling certain excess bond proceeds in the amount of $352,912.22 and reappropriating $50,000 of set excess bond proceeds to finance the costs thereof. This ordinance is in, is for introduction only. Public hearing and adoption will be on April 23rd. Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance 4, 2025?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes. Moving on.
Motion.
Second. Do you have a roll call?
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 8, 2025. An ordinance amending chapter 213 of Washington Township Code entitled Stormwater Control. This ordinance is for introduction only. Public hearing and adoption will be April 23rd. And I get a motion to introduce ordinance 8, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, uh, Councilman Brown. Good evening, members of council and residents of Washington Township. It is an honor for me to stand here before you tonight to present my first municipal budget for the year 2025. This is the earliest municipal budget has been introduced since 2018. This is the standard we want to set forth for each year moving forward. This budget is the result of countless meetings, phone calls, and conversations over the past six months between myself, my business administrator, Joe Russo, our CFO, Colette Babbage, and the rest of our finance department. It was immediately after the election of, in November, that we started discussing our budget status as well as our strategy for this coming year. We, as a group, knew that we had our work cut out for us. We were finishing up one of our toughest years financially, one where we were handed a tax increase of seven cents. Our goal was to put together a budget in a timely manner that takes into consideration the needs of the residents and the financial stability of the township for this year as well as for many years to come. There are many components that directly affect our budget. Here are a few of those components in their current sta, status. Union contracts. The township currently operates with six separate collective bargaining units. The costs of all of these contracts escalate every year. 2024 saw successful completion of new contracts for both the PBA rank and file as well as the PBA sergeants' unions. These contracts are both valid through December 2027. The ASME clerical union contract expired at the end of 2024, and negotiations are, negotiations are currently underway for a new contract. The other three unions are the ASME Labor's Public Works, who are under contract through the end of 2025, the ASME Supervisors Public Works, who are under contract through the end of 2026, and the Police Supervisors, Lieutenants, and Captains, who are under contract through the end of 2026. Healthcare costs. As a result of Washington Township joining the Southern New Jersey Regional Employees' Benefits Health Insurance Fund, healthcare costs remain stable with only a minor increase for 2025. We will continue to monitor the market to, to continue to keep these costs stable moving forward. Trash collection. After a great, after a great deal of hard work from multiple departments within the township, as well as the help of a trash bid industry consultant, we secured a new contract and managed to keep our increase much lower than the 70 to 162% that other towns had incurred. Cannabis dispensaries. In the second quarter of 2024, the township saw the opposing, opening of its first cannabis dispensary. The township began to realize the revenue associated with this in July of 2024. We received payments totaling an amount of $31,267 in 2024. We are anticipating higher revenues this current year with a full year of operation of this dispensary and with a second dispensary opening in township along the Del C Drive sometime in 2025. Fees and revenues. In 2023, for the first time in many years, we updated our ordinances relating to the fees that the township charges. We updated our fee schedule even further in 2024. These charges have produced an increase in fee revenue for 2024 and will likely lead to further increased revenues in 2025. Bank and investment, investment interest. Interest rates continue to remain favorable for the deposits of our idle funds. However, with the recent acquisition of Republic Bank by Fulton Bank, the finance department plans on taking steps to go out for a banking RFP sometime in 2025. This will allow the township to explore the local retail banking market and help us choose the best, best bank partner to service the needs of the township moving forward. Budget stabilization and reduction of appropriations. Through the hard work of myself, the business administrator, and the finance department, the introduced municipal budget for 2025 has a total general appropriations lower than the previous year's budget for the first time in over a decade. The reduction in overall cost was achieved through decreases in salary and wages and in other expenses. Salary reductions occurred through non-replacement of retiring employees, the combination of duties, and the streamlining of operations. Department heads were also asked to keep their department's other operating expenses to a necessary minimum. Additionally, we saw an increase in total collective revenues in 2024. Some of the differences between this year's budget compared to our last year's budget. We do not have any American Rescue Funds remaining to use for this current budget. Last year, we used the remaining $368,954. We reduced the fund balance needed to balance this budget by 41.85%. Salary and rate, wages were reduced by a total of $284,195.32, a decrease of 1.66%. Even after all the contractual increases we incur on a year-to-year basis, through our efforts, we're able still to reduce our overall salary and wages. Other expenses lines was also reduced by a total of $171,233.82, a decrease of 0.73%. This year's municipal tax increase is 2.2 cents compared to 7 cents from last year. I know a lot of people right now are thinking, okay, so what does 2.2 cents mean to me? The average assessed home in Washington Township is $233,101. Now, that's not your market value, that is your assessed value. Therefore, if your house was assessed for $233,101, your annual tax, taxes, property taxes are $8936.58. Only 19% of that $8936.58, which is $1,698.47, would be the portion that we control and operate this town with. Using this scenario, your taxes will increase by a total of $50.45 for the year. That's $4.20 a month. It's a cup of coffee. In a perfect world, I would be standing up here announcing that we're reducing taxes and increasing services. Unfortunately, that world does not exist. We feel this budget is the first step of many to getting our township back to financial strength and stability. We will continue to work hard monitoring all spending within the township and searching for new businesses to come to town. We will continue to work with other governmental agencies and officials and pursue new initiatives and grants for our community. Our goal is to continue, continue to move our township forward and to regain Washington Township's financial stability while continuing to sustain the services that Washington Township residents and taxpayers have come to know and deserve. I would like to thank all our volunteers throughout the township who helped us all year long, especially Mothers' Cupboard, for all their hard work, day in and day out, especially in this ever-changing economy. I would like to thank our dedicated Washington Township employees for their efforts serving our community throughout the year. You are appreciated for all the work that you do. I want to thank you, I want to send a thank you to all my department heads for working with me and tightening, tightening up each of your department's budgets. Your efforts were integral in getting this budget to where it is today. Thank you to the Township Council for working with me. I appreciate all your collaborative efforts, and I'm looking forward to continue working together with you for the betterment of our township. I want to personally thank Joe Russo, Colette Babbage, and our Assistant CFO, Jim Walker, and the rest of the finance department. Your efforts, advice, and hard work have made it possible to not just produce this budget, but to introduce it so early this year. You are truly the best, and I appreciate all of your efforts. I'm grateful to be, to have such a great staff to work alongside every day. Together, we will be extraordinary. Finally, I would like to, to end by saying thank you to all the Washington Township residents for putting your trust and faith in me to lead our town forward. Thank you for your continued support, as my administration and I will continue to work extremely hard every day to make Washington Township a better place for all to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on. Resolution 102, 2025. A resolution authorizing the introduced 2025 municipal budget, read by title only. This resolution allows the, yeah, this resolution allows the budget to be read title prior to adoption in compliance with New Jersey statutes. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 102?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes. Resolution to introduce, oh, I'm sorry, Resolution 103, 2025. Resolution to introduce the 2025 Township of Washington Municipal Budget. Purpose of this resolution to hold a public hearing on the introduced 2025 municipal budget for public comment. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 103?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes. Resolution 104. Resolution for self-examination of 2025 budget pursuant to state statute. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 104?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes. Resolutions. The following resolutions are by consent agenda and only require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate it prior to the reading of the titles. Does anybody on council wish to have a resolution removed and discussed separately? Can you read the resolutions, please?
Resolution 105. Resolution authorizing an agreement for peace clearing services at Washington Lake Park for a term of one year. 106. Resolution awarding a bid to RJS Property Management for 2025 property maintenance services. 107. Resolution authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation of funds. 108. Resolution, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran at block 222, lot 1, effective February 24, 2025. 109. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 7.02, lot 6, effective February 26, 2025. 110. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 86.09, lot 4, effective March 6, 2025. 111. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 86, I'm sorry, did I just read that earlier again?
No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry, I messed up. 111. Resolution canceling taxes...
Yeah, 111.
For a totally disabled veteran, block 54.21, lot 4, effective March 10, 2025. 112. Resolution accepting escrow from Daniel Winter II, 2735, Route 42, block 87, lot 3.04, and block 115.05, lot 22. Escrow 01A1. 113. Resolution authorizing assignment of tax sale certificate number 11-00262 to Arker Home Builders. 114. Resolution authorizing assignment of tax sale certificate number 11-00253 to Arker Home Builders. 115. Resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between the Township of Washington and the Borough of Pittman for Chief Financial Officer Services. 116. State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program Enabling Resolution.
Any questions on the resolutions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions R 105, 2025, to R 116, 2025?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those, uh, roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes. Moving on. Old business, new business, and reports. We'll start with Councilman Harris.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I know that Councilman Bennett is gonna discuss some events going on, uh, for Earth Day, Arbor Day, and, um, he's gonna start closer to today's date, uh, but I'm gonna finish with the, uh, closer to the end of the month. Uh, Sunday, April 27th, 9:00 a.m. to noon is a milkweed and marigold giveaway at Washington Lake Park. Saturday, May 3rd, 9:00 a.m. to noon is Washington Township Relief Tree Ceiling Giveaway, also Washington Lake Park, uh, Parking Lot J. And then Rich is gonna continue with some of the other dates. I want to, uh, send a thank you out to Olivia, Matthew, Josh, Kylie, and Leila for a great performance. I think their performance got stronger and stronger as they went on, and, uh, they finished off, if my, my ears were correct, Colors of the Wind from Pocahontas, which is, I'm a Disney guy, so, uh, I really enjoyed that. They did a great job. Want to thank Frank Altamiro again, also Jack. Uh, they were, they were out here a few weeks back, uh, discussing the trash, so we appreciate them coming back again, uh, to, to add and clarify, uh, some of the issues with our garbage. So I do appreciate that. Want to thank and congratulate, uh, Mayor Anthony Della Pia on the budget, getting that together. I know, uh, firsthand how hard he, he worked on that, and, uh, along with Colette and Joe, uh, so, um, want to give him a little shout out as well. That's it, thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
All right, couple of things is, uh, this past weekend, there was a fur, feathers, and scales, uh, presentation by the Wood, Woodford Cedar Run Wildlife through the environmental. It was a great success. We probably had at least 30 kids there. It was a great way for them to learn about those three types of animals, and it was a great success between the environmental and also the library with Sheila. We appreciate Sheila hosting that. Coming up, the end of this month is the annual, 17th Annual Car Show. I'm the historical preservation's liaison and also helper, so the most important thing is we want people to come out to that event. It's a fundraiser... It's a fundraiser for the Old Stone House to help maintain the Morgan House and also the Old Stone House Village. So there'll be vendors, food vendors, all kinds of cars. You usually have up to 200 cars. It's a great event, and I'll be out in the parking lot at that time. Also, I'm asking for volunteers, meaning that on this Saturday, this Sunday, between 9:00 and 12:00, any high school student or youth or anybody from the National Heritage I want to come out and help. We do need help cleaning up and also getting some rocks moved around, so if anybody needs service hours, please let me know, and also that includes my Boy Scouts. And then on the day of the car show, the 26th, I do need help in the parking lot and other areas at the Old Stone House from 9:30 to 1:30. So if anybody's available for that, you know, just let me know. I have, you know, posted out, or you can just go onto my email and phone number on the webpage. This month is distracted persons and cars. Driving. So our chief did a good job on getting some information out about that. We, again, and making sure that people are not texting and driving at the same time. It's important. And as always, my biggest thing is speeding, so you need to slow down. And remember, we're going to have a lot of kids out now, riding bikes, running around the neighborhoods. Got to slow down, make sure that you're doing the speed limit. Or, again, as usual, Pat and his team writes about 100 tickets every week from that. So that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Bennett. Councilman Yerkes.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate and thank those five wonderful graduating seniors from Washington Township for their time tonight. It was important to get them in tonight because they've got graduation coming up shortly. So a big shout-out to them for giving us time and two great performances. The Veterans Advisory Board met this past week, and they will have a booth at Super Saturday event for any veterans who have questions, want to get involved, please stop by their booth on Super Saturday to talk to someone there. Memorial Day is coming up quickly, May 26, 11:00 a.m. at the lake behind the police station. Please put it in your calendar. Memorial Day is a day that we pay tribute to those fallen soldiers who didn't make it back alive, didn't get a chance to live their life, have a family, and live the American dream. It's the least we can do to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. So please put it in your calendar. Please try to attend. The veterans who do show up and veterans' families do appreciate your presence, so we'd like to see you there. And I want to congratulate our mayor and the people who helped him work on this budget. I think it's phenomenal in light of adrenaline resources and money coming in. To have a budget increase of only 2.2 cents is outstanding. I want to thank you. You got the job done ahead of time, but we're going to review everything at the end of the month, but all the department heads, everyone who works in this municipal building has done an outstanding job in working with us, getting this down, and I think all the residents should be very happy and very proud of the job that was done. Big shout-out, thank you. And thank you, Councilman, Vice President Brown, for a great job.
Thank you. So listen to Rooney.
Nothing new to report. I don't think we'll be back here before, so I hope everyone has a wonderful Easter and a happy Passover and obviously a safe holiday.
Mayor Delapia.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. First, I want to mention the budget. Thank you for your compliments, but nothing gets done with one person. I had a great team alongside me for many hours to get this done, so I appreciate you recognizing me, but like I said, I had a great team next to me, so thank you to all, everybody. I want to thank you to the ensemble. Let everybody know that there's many of these organizations at the schools. Support them, support them, support the band, the play. They're great kids, they need our support, so make sure you get out and support them. What Councilman Bennett said about the speeding, so I get probably three, four, or five emails a week about speeding. Baseball season started. Unfortunately, opening day got canceled last week for baseball. This Sunday, this Saturday's opening day for softball. There's going to be kids everywhere, so please be cognizant, once the weather gets warmer, slow down. If you get a chance to attend the softball opening day, it's at Washington Lake Park at 10:00 a.m. We have two new businesses opening up over the next couple of weeks. We have EcoSpin Laundromat, which is going to open up on Saturday. It's in the shopping center right across from the high school on Herple Crosskey's Road. And Seven Brew, who dropped off some coffee to many towns, I believe the school as well as the municipal building the other day, they should be opening by the end of this So in town, we have this Uber Saves Lives program. I want to commend the chief for spearheading that. We've got a couple donations from a couple local businesses, AHTS, Mazda, and AM Bot this week. This is a program that if you are a township resident and you're at one of the township establishments, and if you're drinking and we encourage you not to drive, we'll pay a free Uber ride up to $15 for you to get home. So this is completely paid for by local businesses and donations. The chief has taken spearheaded and did a great job, so any local businesses listening who want to donate, reach out to myself or the chief. This is a great program, and we want to make sure it stays operating. And last, like Matt Rooney said, Easter's coming up, so I want to wish everybody a Happy Easter to you and your family. Thank you.
Going last is always tough because everybody takes my thunder. Again, I want to thank you, Mayor, and Finance Administration for the hard work that you have done, the department heads who worked with Mayor Delapia to make sure that we could keep the tax increase to a very low, low it's been in a while, but their hard work is to be commended, and their dedication to the township is recognized. Thank you. Our Clerk's Office for what they do for us, getting things in order sometimes the last minute, up to the 11th hour. Thank you guys for all you do, we appreciate it. Sheila, I always take great pride in mentioning the library events, but I felt it appropriate for her to talk about it tonight since she was here. Thank you for the library for sticking around. You guys do a great job over there, and we do appreciate it. A lot of good compliments I hear from people who go over there. Reminder about our Everbridge program. If you can, take a flyer, sign up for it. There could be information that could be blasted out about trash collection. If necessary, we'll work with Public Works to get any information out, along with township emergencies and special events. Again, if you have any questions on that, please feel free to reach out to me. My phone number and email address is on the webpage, and we'll make sure you get taken care of. Moving on, all dogs in the township are required to be registered and vaccinated. Please stop in the clerk's office to register your dog for 2025. The deadline is May 1. Please check our website for information on Earth Day activities. This includes bird walks and exhibits, poetry walks, recycling lessons, milkweed, marigold and tree seedling giveaways. The Old Stone Village is holding their Seventeenth Annual Classic Car Show on Saturday, April 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. More information and the registration form can be found on the website. We encourage everyone to come out and enjoy. All proceeds will be used towards the Stone House Restoration Project. The annual Red Cross Board Drive Battle of the Badges will be held Tuesday, April 29, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the municipal building. Please respond to the call and support our fire department and police department and give the gift of life. Please call 1-800-RED-CROSS to schedule an appointment. The primary election will be held Tuesday, June 10. You may only vote for the party you are registered to during the primary. The deadline for change of your party affiliation is April 16. The deadline to register to vote is May 20. Form can be obtained in the clerk's office. The municipal complex will be closed on Friday, April 18, in observance of Good Friday. Offices will reopen on Monday, April 21. Happy Passover to everyone and Happy Easter. Now going to move into public participation. Please follow the decorum posted, which has been posted, which has been attached to the public agenda, and limit your comments to five minutes. Once you have completed your comments or questions, the council president will then ask if any member of the governing body or their designee wishes to address your questions or comments. Can I get a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public. If you would, come to the podium, state your name and address. Yes. Yes. Good evening.
This is Lorraine Helgen. I live over off of Fish Pond Road in Washington Township.
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Lorraine Helgen, I live over off of Fish Pond Road, Washington Township, and I have a property which, there's 12 homes on a lake. And for 30 years, I've been fighting to get something fixed over there because the town MUA came through and put in a sewer line at the dirt road at the ends of the lake, which was the natural dam. And since then, the lake has been not able to hold water and is leaking under the natural dam. So way back when La Longa was mayor, I fought it, fought it, fought it, and they hired a crew, an engineer, and a construction company to fix the dam. And they put in corrugated steel, blah, 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 and it didn't fix it. So we were told, you know, oh, wait, it'll fill in with the silt and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, ever since then, I've been still fighting it because over the years, it just got worse and worse and worse and worse, and the township did take responsibility that they owned that dam and the sewer line screwed it up, so they did try to fix it. But over the years, it just got worse and worse. I guess, you know, as water flows, you know, hole gets bigger, and now it's at the point where this past summer, there was no water in my lake except at the very end where the dam is, and it was one-third full. So I have been fighting this on and off for 30 years, and last year, finally, after all this time, two mayors ago, I can't recall her name, she let me know that the township was putting in for a grant through the federal government and that I would have to wait about a year because of the way it runs or whatever. And when that grant came through, everybody on council, Norcross's office, because I also contacted them over the years, and the mayor, all called to congratulate me that finally my lake was going to be fixed because they rewarded an $880,000 grant from the federal government. Well, needless to say, I was thrilled because it affects my property value beyond belief, and everybody else is on the lake. And a lot got in the way. I was being, you know, because along the way, I just have to say this one sentence so that nobody repeats it to me. Before the grant came through, and I was fighting for this, everyone said, well, it's a private lake, so, you know, we don't have anything to do with that. And I said, I'm not asking you to fix the private lake, I'm asking you to fix the dam that the township owns and destroyed, which in turn destroyed the lake. So they did agree with that. And so when the grant came through, I contacted the mayor, and she told me that the one that was just then, I can't recall her name either, I'm a little nervous. So everything was set up, they had the engineer, everything, had the plans, and they were going to replace the spillway at my lake. And apparently, the rest of the money was going to the upper lake, which the township apparently owns, and they were going to dredge it and whatever. There's no problem with the upper lake, as far as I know. It holds water, looks beautiful every day. They got a brand-new dam about six years ago. Don't know why they needed that either, but whatever. But they wanted to fix my spillway and not the dam. And the spillway is broken, it does need to be repaired, but it doesn't even come into play because the water never gets up there. I need the township to fix the dam so that we all have a lake again that holds water. And so in the end, I ended up having a meeting with the mayor, the town solicitor, I have their names because I have a letter, I'll show you, I'll have a copy for all of you, and the mayor, town solicitor, and the engineer. And at the end of that meeting, they assured me that this spring, all the plans would be ready, they were going to put another row of corrugated steel in and fix the spillway and made some other promises, and some has to do with contaminants in the upper lake that I want them to test my lake too, because the lake feeds into mine. And so here we are in the spring, and I'm so glad that the lake is going to be fixed. And I called Jack Yerkes to find out, like, is there any updates, do we have a schedule, you know, when they're going to start? And I find out that the town solicitor that I met with, the mayor, of course, that I met with, and the engineering company are no longer being used, that there's all replacements, which is fine, but I'd like to know where the $880,000 grant is and if someone's planning on fixing my lake after 30 years with the grant money. Excuse me? It's considered Ward Lake? And then the upper lake, I'm not even sure what they call that anymore. Grove Street? Yes. Excuse me? Jody Smith? Oh, does she own the lake?
No.
I don't know who Jody Smith is.
Yes, ma'am. So Frank, is this the one I asked you about today? Okay. Do you want to answer now? You want to talk to her after me? So we actually brought up that grant today, and I was talking to Frank about it, and he was filling me in today, actually, he said this morning about it. So Frank, do you want to fill her in?
At some point, okay. Yes, Frank.
So the spillway that she is referring to at the end of Ward Lake is in the process of getting repaired. The permits are still in the DEP, so we didn't receive any permits yet from the DEP. And Remington and Vernick was part of that project as far as the spillway. As far as the spring lake, which the township owns, that siltation removal was the grant money. That was, that was grant money was for, not Ward Lake. So I don't know where you were told, but the spillway, the spillway is, we're waiting on DEP permit.
No, I'm sorry. I was told by everybody, and I have a file this day, that the township was putting in for a grant for the dam and my lake. And then, I'm not going to say who was involved, but in the end, I talked to Norcross's office, everybody, and the only thing that was on that application, other than my complaint, okay, was one sentence that said, for stormwater management to protect the health of our residents. And that, between my complaint and that sentence, I charged you the $880,000. And everybody that I dealt with at the town, including the mayor, including Norcross's office, everybody knew that that was to fix the dam, that the township owns and the township broke and destroyed my property. Okay? Now, I have files and emails of everything that ever happened on local lakes, and I have emails that you sent to the old mayor that said, you know, we can use this for the other things.
For the spillway.
I have emails that, you came to my house, and I showed you the lake, and then a week later, it rained and it filled up pretty good, and then there's letters that you wrote that said, I walked in, I don't see the lake, I don't see the lake, yet it empties. That lake empties in three weeks. So there's a leak. And I've been living there for thirty-something years. I've watched it happen. It used to be a full lake for the first seven years I was there. That's what came through. La Longa knew it, and he tried to fix it, but whatever crew they had to do it, didn't fix it. And I was guaranteed, I have a letter, I was guaranteed when I came in last September and met with the mayor and the solicitor and the engineering company, that they were taking responsibility and they would fix the dam. And every time I spoke to you, you only talked to me about the spillway. And I don't understand how that happens, but I do know that when you get a grant, you're supposed to use that grant for what you specifically said it was for, okay? And the dam was part of that, and I expect for it to be fixed because there are 12 homes on that lake, and our property value is destroyed because that lake cannot hold water. And the only time it stops leaking is when it gets down so far that I have no water out in back of my house, and we drew eight other boxes. When it gets to the deep end where the dam is, it drops the dam. When it gets to the deep end where the dam is, it drops about 20 feet, and then it stops dropping. So I gotta believe that then it's under wherever it's leaking from. But I've been doing this for 30 years, and I don't know what to do. I mean, everybody that was involved in this township called me to congratulate me that the grant came in and they were fixing it. The spillway is broken, but it doesn't hold the water. The water never even gets up to the spillway. So why even fix it?
Because that's the township property. The spillway is the township property.
So is the dam.
Ward Lake is a private lake.
No, but the dam belongs to the township. The dam belongs to the township.
Would dam have...
And dug it up and destroyed it, and in turn destroyed the private lake. And for years, you've been telling me that, okay? In the beginning, you acted as if you were going to help me. And then after that, you just told everyone who would listen, that's a private lake. I'm not asking you to fix the lake. I'm asking to fix the dam that belongs to the township that the township destroyed and therefore destroyed our lake. Okay?
Where were you in the conversation, the presentation, part of that stuff? Is that Washington Township or Washington Township, New West?
It was... Is the MUA forced me through there?
I think it was for you to...
And she could... Yeah, she could provide the letters, too.
Do you understand that I was here already after 30 years of doing this? And all the... I'm sure you have rec... You have to have records from the previous mayor and the previous solicitor and the previous engineer that this is what they promised you. Okay? Because, listen, I don't care what you do with the money as long as my lake gets fixed or your dam gets fixed. But they use that money on something else, and I am going to get in the way of it because that's not what the application was for. You know how to do to get a copy of that application? No one would give this to the township, okay? And then I did get it, and it was that one sentence. But everybody knew, everybody got that money. It was... It was what I was fighting. But the previous mayor, that, who was she? One you were working with when I first came in. She told...
Got Nellie?
That they were putting it in. I have letters for them, putting it in for... To fix that dam. And let's just say this. It is your... It is the township's dam, and the township destroyed it. So the township needs to fix it.
What is... What is... You want to search?
You know, I appreciate that, but after 30 years of this, I'm so tired of... Because this is where I end up. When the grant came through and everyone thanked me... I'm sorry, just one more. When the grant came through and everybody called, including the mayor at the time, okay? Called and said congratulations. Norcross's office knew it because they called me, too. And that dam's going to be fixed, you're going to be fixing it. You did a lot of hard work for the congratulations. But when I found out it was just a spillway, I lost my mind. But I mean, that's... That's just out and out. I knew somebody was doing it on purpose.
What is... And if you look at it and find out, you guys need to do your progress.
Okay, and you need to be there when you look at that. But you should really look into what's happening with the upper lake because for some reason, they got this brand-new dam, now they're getting it dredged and all this stuff. Like, who lives up there? Because it must be someone powerful because they get everything, and there's my lake. It's a big skeeter hole, muddy hole.
We will separate into the situation that I have to meet with. Thank you. Thank you for your participation. My question. Do you have comments or your participation? Hearing none, is the public or emergency? Emergency?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Second. Aye.